Good morning and thank you for joining us this morning at our City Council's work session. We'll go ahead and get started. Ruth, could you please call the role?
Yes, sir. Adamson?
Here.
Ray?
Here.
Gina?
Here.
Laura?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Manon?
Here.
Glad.
Here. Thank you. Agenda item number two is proposed December-January budget amendments. Finance staff will present proposed fiscal year 2019 budget amendments to the council. Joyce?
Good morning, Mayor and council members. Joyce Stroshine, Chief Financial Officer. Today I'm presenting you with the proposed January budget amendments for 2019 fiscal year. We have 21 listed amendments affecting 10 funds. The public hearing notice will publish on the 19th of December and the 26th of December. Work session is today and then the amendment public hearing will be held on January 3rd and then at the end of that meeting we'll consider the ordinance or the council will consider the ordinance for consideration. Okay, general fund amendments. There's $13,236 in amendments requested in the general fund. In the mayor and council department, we have the snacks with the mayor event. We received donations and so we're looking for additional authority for the expenses related to the event. So that's $120. Mayor's walking challenge health grant. The mayor participates in this challenge each year and the city receives $1,000 for which he can make a charitable contribution to a health-related event. And so we're looking for the authority for him to be able to expend that money. Okay, police department. They had a court adjudicated refund on medical waste supplies, so we're looking for additional authority to pour supplies after receiving the refund. Animal services department. Last year they received about $90,000 for the surgical suite at the animal shelter and so this is $9,440 for dental equipment related to that surgery suite and they have not fully expended the $90,000, so this is covered under the grant. So it's kind of held in the reserves and so we're just looking for the authority to recognize this additional expense that needs to be made. Okay, other fund amendments. $3,550,295. So in the street fund, we have the new facility renovation. $36,048. That's going to be coming out of reserves, out of street fund reserves. The brine plant, $75,000. This was initially a 2018 planned expense but it didn't occur in 18, so that's why it's moved over and that's why we have the reserves available for it as well. New facility renovations, $265,000. This is related to the work that's being done at the Garrett Way building. And so this is the street funds portion of those renovations. The additional, I think when it came through it was a little over one, about one and a half million for the renovations. This is the additional amount needed to ensure that we have the full authority to pay those bills.
So the two renovations, are they different from each other?
No. The other one is just work that they did in-house, you know, prepping the building and that.
So why do we have two different requests?
I just, well, I segregated them by the type.
Okay.
One was in-house work, the other one is the contract work that we hired. So you would understand the differences between the two.
Where does that leave the street fund reserves then?
I will be doing a recalculation on that. I know that they had quite a bit in excess. I didn't bring that with me here today, but last year and they didn't expend everything. I know that some of their monies that came in highway user and that were above what was planned and so my estimation is they'll have reserves again. This is just going to bring it down a bit. But I usually do that reserve review around February, March. We get quite a bit of waste through the caper preparation and get the numbers really finalized for 18 before we do that review. Airport fund, Idaho power rebate for lighting upgrade. So they upgrade the lighting in the shop in the terminal and so this rebate comes in to help offset some of the expense. So we're just looking for the authority for that. Transit rule fund. This is another one of those where we had planned for it in 18, had built the authority, but it didn't execute. And so for the two cutaway buses and the one accessible van, that's $300,000 that's in the rule fund. So it's covered by grants and their reserves that they had for the match. Okay? But this is one of those that, you're hearing it again. You might have thought, "I've heard that one before," and you did in 18. But it's just the amount of time it takes to get these buses built and get them ready for delivery sometimes takes longer than anticipated. Okay? Same with the transit urban fund. You have five-floor buses and one accessible van, $635,000. These are covered by grants and the match money is coming from Fund 78 that had been set aside for it. So the expenses are all covered by revenues that have been either new revenues coming in or high reserves that had been set aside for that purpose, that capital purpose. Science and Environment Fund, design and construction of improvements to Pocatelle Creek Road, $26,105. That is from, I'll have to check again. I think that is coming from her reserves and she did have ample reserves for that. She had about $133,000 at the end of last year and she hadn't expended her reserves. Same with design and construction of improvements to Cusick Creek, $10,000. Sanitation fund. Okay, this is the new facility renovation, $651,048. Now, last year, initially we had set up, we had made the request and did a budget amendment for a half million each to both street and sanitation for the renovations. Well, those only barely got started by the time we ended the year. So about 130,000 of it had been expended. And so what we're trying to do here is complete how much is going to be needed in order for the renovation to be paid for in full at the end of the time. And so what you're seeing is the remaining amount of that $500,000 plus the $265,000 that we know we needed based on what the bid came in at. Okay? Wash bay for the new facility. This one was another one where they had programmed it last year. It didn't get completed. So $60,025 and that's coming out of reserves. Water pollution control fund, replace primary pipeline at the WPC plant. This is one of those that was started, wasn't completed in time for 18, so we needed new authority in 19 to complete the process. Fleet internal service. The final expense for the fleet software, $79,938. This was budgeted in 18, didn't complete itself, and so this is just giving us the authority to complete that process. Now, supplies for vehicle maintenance and labor for vehicle maintenance is the way that we're going to handle what they're doing in fleet right now, for the vehicles they're working on. So I need authority in this fund so that they capture the expense that they will now bill to the department instead of just sending a bill direct because we have street mechanics that are doing the labor for the vehicle maintenance. So I have to be able to recognize those expenses and then bill back the department. So the revenue source is going to come from the departments having the work done. So that's not really an expenditure out as much as a proper and transparent way of reporting the expenditures related to fleet for the year. Capital improvement fund. Okay, I broke these all down a little bit so that you could see the ones that you'd already kind of targeted, which was, we had targeted transit bus match transfer. That's the $147,483 available for the buses and that $635,000 in buses. This is the match side of it. Okay? And then street, new facility, that was the $350,000 that they hadn't expended from that $500,000 bucket last year. So this is the remaining portion. Then what we did was I put in assigned and unassigned. So this, by doing all those amendments, we're basically opening up authority within the capital improvement fund. So if you make a decision, you being the council, to expend some money for a purpose, then I don't have to do another budget amendment to get that ability to expend it. Once again, it's your decision-making that allows it. So like, within this number, $241,606 is available in unassigned authority within capital contingency that's in this fund. Okay? Not counting the new monies that will be coming into the fund, but just from, this is from 18 rolling into 19. Okay? So all we're doing is trying to give authority so that if you make a decision that you want to do something, we have the ability to expend the money. Okay? Okay, so this is a listing by fund of all the amendments totaling $3,563,531. No action immediately following the hearing on January 3rd. Then action is taken during the same meeting but at the end of the meeting during the ordinance section. Do you have any questions regarding the amendments?
Questions, council?
No, I think your presentation's excellent and the material that we had in advance makes it possible to understand that. So thank you.
Super. Thank you. Then we'll move to agenda item number three is proposed changes to wireless communications facilities. Planning staff will be present to discuss proposed federally mandated changes to wireless communication facilities ordinance.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. Matthew Lewis, senior planner with the city. Just a brief background because we have some new council folks. The Pocatello City Council adopted modification of Chapter 1542 Wireless Communication Towers and Facilities in September of 2016. The ordinance created three type categories or applications in addition to establishing shock clock processing rules as required by the FCC Rule Section 6409 and codified at 47 USC 1455, better known as the Spectrum Act. This act was intended to facilitate the telecommunications industry's rapid deployment of wireless infrastructure by requiring local governments to approve any application that seeks to modify an existing WCF which does not substantially alter the existing facility. So most of the time under Type 1 and Type 2, those are usually always approved administratively. So if somebody, if a wireless communication facility, Verizon, AT&amp;T, came in, they wanted to put some facilities on an existing tower and they didn't go beyond a certain height, which is 10 feet above the existing, and that can be approved administratively. So that's either a Type 1, Type 2. The Type 3 is only under our current ordinance is when you put a tower. So we don't get a lot of those. The council did approve with a conditional use permit, I guess with the tower that's over near I-15. So with that brief background, the purpose of my presence this morning is to inform you that on September 26, 2018, the FCC approved a new rule, the streamlining deployment of next-generation wireless infrastructure, declaratory ruling, and third report order. And basically what that is, is they're deploying what they call the 5, you probably heard of this, the 5G deployment, and it deals mostly with small cells. The thing, there's actually five different areas that they affect, but the ones that really affect us are, it limits the local government to assess on telecommunications companies, the placement, construction, and co-location of those facilities. And then it also limits how much a municipality can charge for a specific site and so forth. So in light of these changes, I will be making revisions to the WCF ordinance and will probably bring that to the council in February. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I know it's really technical kind of stuff, but we, just to bring it into conformance with the FCC rules, just wanted to bring that to your attention. So do you have any questions?
This is really exciting.[946.24][946.24](Laughter)
Yeah, I know. I get real, I get excited because of Solia.
I have a question. So the limit on charges would be more of the fee structure we have, not what we would negotiate for our own structure, right?
Yeah, yeah. So like with the tower, yeah, you can, the municipality still has that ability. It's with the small cells. For instance, if you have a small wireless facility, then the rule is to $500 for up to five sites and then $100 per site thereafter. And then for small cells that are in public right-of-way, so say, just to give you an idea, where you're going to have, where you have a lot of these small cells instead of the towers and so forth, they would be like a real busy intersection. So say Alameda and Yellowstone. You have a lot, you have a lot of, you know, people that are backed up, cars, everybody's on their cell phones.
Not as much.
I know, they're not supposed to be. They're not supposed to be. But what those small cells do is they actually pick that up where the towers will not and they had that drop off. So, and they're not, so they would be like on, you know, like a traffic pole or something of that nature. So that's when, that's what they're talking about when they talk about in the public right-of-way. Or on, you know, Idaho Power utility pole or something of that nature. So they limit that under this, under this new rule of what a municipality can charge.
So do we have a corresponding fee to that too?
Yeah, well, we have.
Like pull or on a?
We're working with, we're working with streets on that. Under our current code, it does not allow any type of facilities on any of our traffic poles and stuff because there's some concern with how that would affect, you know, the cameras and the timing and stuff like that. But we have been approached by Verizon folks of, you know, this is how it works. And so they've given us some, you know, basic proposals, I guess, in terms of how they would like to see our ordinance. And so I'm going to be using some of that to revise that and bring it to you in February.
So there's a fee for installing it? Is there a fee for maintaining it?
Well, it'd be the company themselves would be responsible for maintenance.
Well, it just looks like it's an encumbrance of a public right-of-way if they're out there putting something up and down and stuff like that.
Is there a limit on the number of things that can be put out there, like on any given?
FCC doesn't limit it. Under this, under this new rule, I think that the municipality can negotiate that, you know, with the companies and say, and the ordinance say, okay, you can't have more than two small cells on, you know, the traffic signal pole that's at Alameda and Yellowstone. I think that's fair based on what I'm, what I understand of this, of this new rule.
Would we put anything like that in the ordinance?
It would probably, I think I would draft something like that. And we're working, again, working with traffic on some of that because under the current ordinance, it was like, no, we absolutely don't want any, anything, you know, as far as cells on our facilities. But I think that we can work through that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Super. Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll move on to agenda item number four, proposed facilities and facilities use and recreation programs policy. Parks and Recreation staff will be present to review the proposed policy document regarding facilities use and recreation programs within the department and seek council's input and direction. Good morning, John.
Good morning, Mayor Webb and council members. John Banks, Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you here today. In an effort to improve the efficiency of reserved park system facility use and recreation program participation in the community, staff has undertaken development of a comprehensive set of guidelines for use of city amenities and participation in city recreation services. And the goals of this effort were twofold. First, to create a more streamlined reservation system for park facility and sports field users where the Parks and Recreation Department staff would administratively approve and issue facility use permits to patrons which are routine in nature. Under this scenario, use permits could be issued on the spot by staff and would reference the terms and conditions of the policy document, creating improved and more timely responses to patron requests. And the second goal was to hopefully provide an unburdening of the legal department staff and city council from the vast majority of the use agreement process. The policy document was drafted to include all applicable city code language, traditional user agreement language, and additional staff recommended guidelines based on community facilitation experience and challenges, and designed to fairly, equitably, and consistently administer use of park system facilities and participation in city recreation programs. The policy document has been developed in close coordination with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board over multiple meetings during late '17 and into 2018, and all of the board direction has been implemented into the document. The initial draft of this policy document was presented to the legal department for review earlier this year. And following that review process, staff has also implemented all directed legal department edits, revisions, and additions. And with that was granted permission by legal to proceed with presentation of this final draft version of the policy document to council with the understanding that should there be any conflicts in interpretation that occur between this Parks and Rec facility use of programs policy and the city code, that the city code shall always take precedence. And that language is very specifically noted in Section 2 of the policy document which indicates that city code preference, or I'm sorry, precedence. This final draft policy presented this morning includes a handful of proposed edits and additions to the current city code. And I tried to make those stick out like a sore thumb by bolding them and yellow highlighting them. So those are yellow highlighted in the document. And for the most part, attempt to establish clear, fair, and equitable guidelines for patrons who wish to use city facilities for profit. And with that, it's requested that council provide staff input and direction regarding the Parks and Rec Department's proposed facilities use and programs policy document. And if acceptable, direct staff to bring the proposed code edits and additions, followed by the policy document itself, forward to council at a future meeting, or future meetings for adoption consideration. And with that, be glad to answer any questions that the council might have.
Councilman President Jones.
I didn't quite understand why the red bolding of current city code. Is that a grade that you're working on?
No, the red, just the plain red type is current city code.
But why is that there rather than the brown, the black print?
The black print is kind of staff-developed language to kind of supplement and give context and kind of fill in the blanks. A lot of the, I think I mentioned, kind of based on, you know, years of community facilitation and some of the challenges and experiences that we've had, sometimes the code tends to be a little general for some of the requests that we get. And the attempt was made to kind of, kind of fill in the blanks with the staff-developed language to the current city code. And then just through the years, we've had, we've had, you know, challenging situations of patrons, you know, wanting to use city facilities. Most of the time the challenges come is when they want to do, provide a for-profit service on kind of taxpayer subsidized facilities. So we, code was a bit general in dealing with that and it created some challenges for us and some frustration for the patrons. So we wanted to, the majority of the chain, or the recommended additions to city code kind of revolve around those challenges. And it's not too extensive. I think there's a couple, three paragraphs to that effect to try to create a fair and equitable system. But the yellow highlighted is the proposed changes.
Yeah, we'll see that through.
Can we, I'm looking at number J, photography and video recording at city facilities.
What page is that, Roger?
It's toward the end.
It's toward the end. It's number J under number 10, I believe, or 8.
Does it show a page number at the bottom of the page?
No, I don't have page numbers.
They're up on the top.
I can read it to you.
Yeah.
It says Parks and Public Places.
Oh, I'm with you here.
Were permitted license, no, wrong one. J. Photography and video recording at city facilities. Commercial photography and/or video recording taking place at any city facility either in conjunction with a permitted activity or event or individual photography and/or video recording services shall require a photography/video recording permit. Are we able to do that on public facilities? Because, you know, I mean, I just read where the issue of recording in livestock facilities, even if you're trespassing, it's a free speech endeavor and it was overturned. So is this one of the things maybe?
Jared and I actually had some pretty extensive discussions on this particular one in emails back and forth. It's not at all the intent to, you know, if somebody's has a birthday party and grandma and grandpa want to do some video recording or some pictures, absolutely, we welcome all of that and would never try to stand in the way of that. This would be for, let's say you have a, I don't know, a local studio over on Main Street. I think the gentleman unfortunately just is selling the business, but, you know, they're paying all those costs for their storefront and the insurance and everything that goes with it to kind of provide that service. This would be for maybe the outfit that wants to kind of run it out of their house and take all their, take their photographs at the beautiful city facilities, you know, kind of at no cost.
Well, they're free to do it today.
Well, we, and I mean, we don't have staffed facilities, so it would be difficult to enforce. But we have had a couple of these types of requests and in staff's mind, it's kind of an equity issue where, you know, if, you know, why are we charging the storefront, the, you know, the city property taxes and everything to be in business where we would allow someone to come and do for-profit, who knows what, wedding pictures or a video for Sports Illustrated, whatever the case may be, at zero cost. So it was trying to provide some equity there. And I think after some initial concerns, Jared, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you were fairly comfortable with this in the end. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Jared Johnson, City Attorney. Yeah, like John said, we went, we went back and forth on this quite a bit to make sure really that I understood what it was that he was requesting in this commercial video and photography permit process. And what he said is true, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, but my recollection, this has been a while ago, but my recollection was also to address circumstances where somebody's coming in and using a substantial portion of a facility, not allowing other people to have that same use at that time. So they're almost, it's almost like reserving a portion of the facility. That was the part I was definitely most comfortable with. I think that's easily enforceable and justifiable for a fee or a permit, for that, a fee for that permit. So-
So, from that aspect, I don't have any problems with it, and, and I think that's really kind of where we landed. If they're, if they're shutting down a whole pavilion or a whole, not shutting down, but utilizing the whole thing so that somebody else wouldn't have that ability to use it during that time, it makes sense that it's some sort of regulated permit process in that situation.
What if you have a photographer taking some, I mean, and it's for-profit, but like a commercial photographer taking some pictures of a couple who are going to get married, you know, like engagement photos or something, in the corner of one of our parks? But it's not, as you say, taking over a facility or interrupting any of, anybody else's activities or, you know, if they're just in the park taking some photos, does, does this apply? Do they need to have a permit to do that or?
Yeah, so, so if it's a, I mean, if it was, I don't know, mom and dad taking some pictures to send out wedding invitations, you know, that's, you know, that's not a for-profit thing, but, but a, but providing commercial services, I guess, on, you know, the taxpayers, I guess, subsidized maintenance and care of these facilities, which kind of bring the desire to use them. So, in my mind, if, if somebody is using a taxpayer subsidized facility for a private for-profit purpose, we would ask them to acquire a commercial permit. And the fees aren't extensive. They were, they were included in this year's fee resolution. It's just, it, it just brings a little bit of equity to, you know, possibly the, the gentleman or somebody that has a storefront business that incurs all of those costs to provide these services, whereas someone else doesn't have to. So, it's just creating a little equity there. But, but yes, in my mind, that would be if it's a, if it's a, a commercial for-profit purpose, that we would ask them to, you know, pay a small fee to the city and obtain that permit to do so.
And how would that be enforced?
Well, like I said, we, we don't have staffed parks, so I, I wouldn't doubt that it has a possibility to happen without our knowledge. But we have received, what prompted me to this, I did have something exactly like this in, in my previous city, and what prompted me to, to want to bring it to the Parks and Rec Board for consideration and to Jared was that we have had a handful of requests over the years and just kind of not any way to deal with it. So, we've, well, you know, we don't have any policy to that effect, so we've allowed them to do so in the past, and it's not a lot. It's, it's maybe five since I've been here. But this at least gives us a reasonable mechanism to accommodate those requests in a fair manner for everybody across the board.
Would this be all facilities, like Simpott Square?
Yeah.
I've seen people down there several times.
Sure. Yeah, if they come to us and request it, and it's for a for-profit purpose, we would ask them to obtain a permit. There's probably going to be people falling through the cracks. You know, we've got a, a fairly specific beer and wine ordinance in the code as well, but I guess I'm not naive enough to think that, that the dis golfers don't have a beer once in a while out there. It's, you know, we don't have staffed parks, so there's some things that kind of fall through the cracks a little bit. But if they do come to us, at least we have this mechanism.
And there's provision in here where you make sure they have insurance and all that stuff?
Yes.
Any other questions for John?
That was just one of those yellow highlighted things.
The big document is what it is.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Council?
Looks like a good document to him, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so I'm assuming, what are your next steps with this? Remind the council for?
If the council is so inclined, I, I would love the opportunity to be directed to, to bring forward the proposed code edits and additions. And again, these have been reviewed by Kirk and Legal already, and given the thumbs up, but I, I would like to be able to present those to council at the next available opportunity, and then follow that with the complete policy document at a later time. We're, our reservation season doesn't ramp up until early in the spring, so this will be wonderful to have in place by sometime early next year if possible.
So, we're good with that, Council?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Also, Jared, I guess Kirk is out with some, some shoulder surgery, but just wanted to put a, a public thank you to the legal department. I know this was a very comprehensive exercise to go through, and they put a ton of time into it with me trying to bring it forward to you guys. In fact, I was joking, I was joking with Kirk that I was going to name my next, my next kid after him for his effort on this. Talking about, you know, our oldest are 29 and 21, our youngest are 19, so my wife says it's not likely, but the offer stands nonetheless. So, thank you, guys. Legal, thank you.
Maybe a goat. Never say never.
Maybe you could name a goat after that. The next goat. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 5, Proposed Changes to Employee Handbook Voluntary Demotion Policy. Human Resources Staff will be present, will present proposed corrections to the voluntary demotion pay policy to address equality, equity with the NCD departments.
How do you bring a PowerPoint this time?
What?
I know. It's a natural for me.
This is going to be short, it's like two, one page.
Sometimes it's not a PowerPoint.
It's good. I have a PowerPoint sometimes.
Heather Buchanan, Human Resources Director. So, we found a loophole in one of our policies we would like to close. Currently, an employee can choose to demote, which means move to a position in a lower pay grade, as long as they move through an interview process. The problem with our current policy is they're currently placed in the step closest to their current pay without an increase. Well, we have some creative employees who have decided that they can demote in levels of responsibility, and they're going to make maybe $60 less a year. The problem is, one of these employees has now done this multiple times within a department, so he's making more than someone with 20 years of experience at his new job, because he went from like a skilled technical into another branch of technical. So, he's making much more than the employees with years of service. What we're trying to do is close that loophole. So, if an employee were to voluntary or involuntarily be demoted, they would not go to the next closest step without a pay raise. They would go down to a step three. That would put them below the market value of the position and give them a couple years to learn how to do the new position before they would be considered at market. This is maybe the least controversial thing I've ever brought you up to.
We can find.
I'm sure you can find something.
We can find some controversy.
This is a deliberate retirement plan, scaling back.
Yes, it is. It's just it causes a lot of inequity, especially if you have skilled operator positions, senior operator to regular operator, and those sort of things, they cause problems for us. Department heads have asked for help addressing this, so I said I would bring it before council.
Is it happening frequently?
We've noticed it.
With this one person?
This one person.
Other than the one, I mean.
Most, very rarely do employees choose to voluntarily demote. Usually, if they do, it's because they've found out their new position is not a good fit for them. The situation we're kind of dealing with right now, no, this is very much outside the norm, but the manager doesn't feel that we've given them the tools to stop this behavior from happening.
And is it happening in several, in, in many departments, or is, does it tend to be specific?
We've seen it specifically in one.
Okay.
There's some departments probably that it wouldn't work in, and there's other departments where it works very well.
Yeah, some departments just don't have openings. It's very rare. Departments who've seen a lot of turnover in the last couple of years, there's a little bit of shuffling that goes on after you've had a bunch of retirements, so you do see a little bit of movement. That's where we're seeing the problem.
My first thought when I read this was, you know, who would, who would choose to demote themselves?
That's when I wrote the policy, that's kind of where I was at, so I clearly missed a piece.
Somebody's really getting creative.
They usually do.
They've gotten to the point they get to go get the coffee and everything else, and still make their pay. That's right.
So, if you could provide feedback, or, yeah, this looks great.
I think we go ahead with it. You know, I have no idea who this is, or, but it just makes sense to close some of these areas that can be exploited.
I try to really look at a policy from all sides, but I really just missed this loophole.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the proposed changes to the employee handbook outlined in Agenda Item 5.
Okay, we have a motion by Chitam and a second by Adamson. Ruth, could you please call the room?
Yes, sir. Gina?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it passes. Thank you very much. Apparently it wasn't that controversial.
Great, I have a policy for you, so.
Okay. If you have legal, look at it.
Jared.
Anyway, thank you very much, Council. I'm shocked and confused, quite frankly, but we went through five agenda items in 40 minutes, and we spent three hours before on an agenda item whether or not to do some trivial things, so it's, it's fantastic. I'm not complaining, I'll tell you that much right now. I know that we were.
It just proves that once in a while we can deal with Heather.
That's right. Once in a while we can do this stuff.
They knew this was really important, they just wanted to get it out of there.
Well, that's, that's good. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 6, which is an adjournment. So, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.